The Windsor Town Council work session for October 20th, 2025. You all should have received the minutes from the last work session meeting on September 15th, 2025. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes?
I'll make that motion.
All right, we have a motion to accept the minutes from September 15th, 2025. Do I have a second?
I'll make the second.
You have a second. Any questions? All in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Meeting minutes for 2025 were accepted. Item number two is hunting on Bowersocks Farm. All right.
Topic was on both the September work session and October council agendas. An MOU was, has been created, revised, and it's in tonight's folder. Attorney Ostrander has looked at this as well and pretty much ready to go if you all want to move forward with it.
All right, do I have any questions about the MOU?
No, looks good.
Looks good.
So I don't have any problems with it, not, not a hunter. But I guess the only thing I see in there is that the Director of Public Works seems to have all the responsibility to keep it, to keep it running, to keep the right people there and, you know, he has all the responsibilities. And, you know, he's, I'm sure going to be one of the people that, you know, will be, be able to utilize this as, as a town employee. And I'm not trying to say it's the, the fox in the hen house kind of thing, but I guess, you know, if something would go wrong with it, it would lose that, that privilege. So I guess he has every, you know, reason to make it run smoothly and right. It's just a lot of, it seems to be a lot of responsibility, but I couldn't think of anybody else that, to, to do that kind of stuff that would, you know, really have a vested interest in, and, and maybe even be there to ensure. So I'm assuming, and I, I'm sure Wayne understands that he's got, he's got it all on his shoulders because it, you know, calls him out in there, the Director of Public Works.
He pretty much developed the, the base, the draft of this MOU and then I, I looked at it, Michelle looked at it.
So if he's okay with, with taking on that responsibility, I have no problem with it, but.
Um, I would say to that point that we, how long's the, unfortunately, I cannot open it, but.
Five years.
Five years is the agreement of the MOU?
Yeah, and then that, I think one of the things I added in there was that they, the MOUs with town staff shall be evaluated each year prior to the designated hunting season, hunting season.
That's a good addition.
I added that because I thought just a blanket five years was.
Yeah.
Doesn't give us a chance to address any concerns.
Just reevaluate it each year.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you for reading my mind there because I was thinking, you know, Wayne strikes oil on this, on one of his properties and he doesn't, he doesn't, he isn't a public works director. I wouldn't want that to be a carte blanche, you know, responsibility of the, the next department, Department of Public Works Director. All right, well, if we're covered that way, I, you know, we looking for a vote for that? All right, do I hear a motion to accept the MOU as written?
I'll make the motion to accept the MOU for hunting on Bowersocks Farm as written.
Okay, we have a, a motion to accept the MOU. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Yes. Oh, okay. Councilman Wolf Mallow, second. All right, any questions? Any unreadiness? All in favor? All in favor, stay so by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right, thank you. All right. Item number three is Mike Condon's request to extend Bowersocks Farm lease.
Yeah, that was on for the October council meeting. And Mike Condon submitted a letter requesting an extension of the lease for 10 years to help recoup expenses incurred in making the improvements to the farm. The letter's in the folder this evening. Condon Brothers Farm started the current lease in 2022 and the original term was January 1 of that year to December 31st, '22, with four one-year renewals. The current 25-year lea-, 2025 lease is in, is the fourth year. Condon Brothers are great tenants. They take very good care of the town farm. They do a lot of extra pro bono work out there and Director Myers and I believe that Mike's request should be considered by Mayor and Council.
And you said this is the, all right.
Yeah, this is the fourth year, fourth year of the current lease.
Okay, and the current lease is five years, so he's.
For '26 in the current lease.
And so he's looking to go out to 2036?
10 years, yeah.
Okay, um, any questions or discussion about that?
10 years is a long time.
I know you're all thinking that.
They certainly have done a great job there, yeah.
So this is a blanket 10 years. It seems like that they're, they're, just as the last one we did, there should be some kind of, some kind of.
Review.
Review. I mean, what happens if, you know, in five years, just say, I don't know, something happens and we need to do something different with that, that farm? We would be, our hands would be tied for another five years. You know, I'm not opposed. It, it seems like there should be some kind of. We could, doesn't necessarily have to be every year, but.
We could do, if you wanted to, five, 10's a long time. I, I agree 100%. You guys could do it as a five, for a five year with a reevaluation in five, in, in five years. You know, with the option to extend.
Yeah, I'm more comfortable with that.
I'm, I'm more comfortable with that. The only, uh, the only reason I hesitate a little bit about that is there's some things happening that may require us to reevaluate water. And with that being a place where, well, does the, does our, our water, what are our rights in terms of the MOU, the current MOU and access to the, our water, our wells and everything?
The current MOU is strictly for, it's a farm lease.
Okay, so it doesn't, our, our water, okay. And access. We, we have access?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. He doesn't farm that, that, the portion of the farm that we access and get to mainspring, uh, he doesn't, it's not the farming side of it.
Okay, all right, so.
You know, remember when we came in on the tour, we went down the one driveway? Well, we go, there's a, the first driveway peels off to the left, it takes you down through the woods.
Yeah.
And then to the, to the mainspring. So that's not a farmable, that's a wooded area. He does not farm.
I certainly think five years makes it more palatable. Not that 10 is bad, it's just that it just.
Ties our hands too much.
Yeah.
Do a five year with a reevaluation in five years?
I would be comfortable with that.
Yeah.
Are you good with that? Are you good?
We'll wait till we get, we'll revise the MOU and just approve it based on the five years once we have.
Now, he, he actually texted me the other day and was filing up about it and I said it was on the agenda. So I'll get back to him, let him know and then, like I said, we don't have to do anything with the lease until probably towards the end of next year. We'll redo the lease.
Okay. All right, well.
Thank you.
Let him know that I'm personally speaking for myself and I'm sure that the rest of the council probably concurs that we're thankful for the work that he does out there because they've done a lot, so.
He's a good tenant to have out there.
If you would just let him know our sentiments, maybe we'll, I'll see him again and, actually, I think I did say something to him when we were there for the water tour.
His wife was at the, the 5K with the, with the Australian shepherd with the wings on it.
Oh, that's his wife?
It's his wife, yeah.
Aw, man.
She comes there a year.
Wow, well, they did a good job. The dog ran their whole race better than I did. So, all right.
Thank you, I'll let him know.
Yeah. All right, item number four, cybersecurity.
All right, so you guys had two questions. What is the password manager? That is keeper that Maryland IT would suggest. And then the other question was, what if we move forward with this and we do get hacked? What does Maryland IT do for that? So I asked Cory just that question. It says regarding being hacked, nothing will change. Right now, we have a lot less in place to protect you. With the cybersecurity plan, we would formulate a recovery plan and backups and all of that would be in there and how they handle it step by step. So it really, the next step would be to move forward and then come up with a recovery plan. So that does take it from $671 to about $2,000 in one. It was budgeted for in this fiscal year budget.
It was budgeted.
It was, so we are covered. And if we start it in November, which is pretty much where we will be, we would be under that budget line.
Okay. And that, that is, I'm sorry, I, I remember the discussion, but if you could recap again. The first, is it, is keeper the name of the?
The name of the password manager?
Well, I am really pleased to hear that because that's who I have personally.
How to use it.
So.
Yeah, really.
It's not a good one, guys?
They're all vulnerable in their own way.
Yeah.
But.
They fail safe.
It's the one that they're back and that, that they're familiar with, so.
Yeah. So, and then the, the second part was exposure and coverage?
So we would be fully covered and then if we were to be hacked.
Yeah.
Our next step again is develop a plan and then step by step.
Do it, implement it.
Exactly, implement it. And we would get with Legit, which again, we're grandfathered in with Legit. We don't have to meet an X, Y, Z requirement at this moment. It does not mean that next year we will meet, not have to meet an X, Y, and Z requirement. Again, it is not if, it is when.
Yeah.
You're anticipating when?
Yeah, yes.
A recovery plan is important.
What's the current cost?
$671 and we would be $2,000.
I'm sorry Dana, one more time, you said that if we were hacked, they said that we would be covered and all, but we would develop a recovery plan?
So they would, they would help us develop a recovery plan of.
Wouldn't we have a, a recovery plan developed before we get hacked?
Well, yes, before, like, oh, sorry. So when we move forward with this cybersecurity plan.
If we upgrade.
If we upgrade, we would develop a plan.
Okay.
In the event, in the event that we got hacked. So I apologize, that was my, yes, my clarification.
Got it. All right.
Sounds like we'd be foolish not to do this.
I would strongly recommend it. I mean, Frederick Memorial's been hacked within the past year.
Yeah, I heard about that.
You've seen Fox Mercy be hacked.
Yeah.
It is just, again, it is not if, it's when and let's put the pieces in place.
And so tonight, would we, do we need to give you?
Give me a vote to accept the plan.
We're voting on a lot tonight, all right. All right, do I hear a motion to accept, um, Maryland IT's offer to provide cybersecurity at the increased rate of 2,000 a month?
I'll make that motion.
All right, we have a motion to accept their offer, the proposal for $2,000. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a fir-, a motion and a second. All in favor, stay so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Item number five is 211 High Street redevelopment RFP for general contracting.
Okay, uh, let's take this here. Okay, so the proposals were due Friday, October 3rd by 2:30 PM and we did not receive any proposals. We did receive emails from all three of the general contractors that attended the pre-bid meeting. ARA Construction said the project does not align with the type of work they can do at this time. Contour Construction stated, and I had this in last week, last meeting, I believe. After reviewing the available documents and participating in the site walks, we found that key details, drawings, and scope definitions are not yet fully developed. Submitting a bid under these conditions would require broad assumptions, creating a high risk of scope creep and significant budget overruns. We do not believe that proceeding with the current hard bid method is in the best interest of the town in New Windsor. To help reduce risk and protect the town's budget, we recommend a partnership under our owner's representative construction management approach. And their email stating that is in tonight's folder under Contour Construction. And then Hader, H-A-I-D-E-R, um, and company provided a very detailed email, which again, is in tonight's folder. One of their main issues was with the requirement for the lead-free certificate from MDE. Because of this requirement, without any testing, they were not able to land on a fixed price on the environmental elements and therefore had to step away from the sealed bid process, project process due to uncertainty of pricing, which may be hard to achieve by any contractor. If you look at their email, a guy sent, he did like a three-page email. They were very interested in the project, still interested in the project, willing to work with us in any way. He even gave us where he landed on a budget number. I think it was land 675-ish, six, what, I don't remember the exact number. But yeah, he, he did provide a very detailed, uh, email. So, you know, I'm, that's where we are with the project right now. So I'm looking, staff is looking for directions, direction from council at this point on next steps.
All right, well, I'm actually, Dave and I talked about this a second and then it, actually after I was reading through it, I remember this email. I'm actually thankful for the way he broke this out because this kind of gives us a rough budget. It doesn't, you know, I know that's not what we were shooting for. We were looking for a, a hard number, but we currently have the 250. We asked for, I think, an additional four or 450 in the late, on the latest grant request. That puts us, they pointed this out, Councilman, often pointed out that it puts us in the neighborhood.
Yeah, based on that. I think, again, the X factor is, is the lead-free certificate.
Right.
Which, you know, if you read his email, he goes into a lot of detail about that.
But they were, they were basically saying that they could do testing and right now, didn't he say?
Let me see.
Environmental testing of $33,000. Removal abatement.
He had a $33,000 for environmental.
Yeah.
But we could not guarantee a lead-free certificate as we were planning to keep all working in historical windows in place to preserve historical nature of the building in our proposal. He also, I believe, said something about different type of certificate. He used the term, where is it?
Lead-safe status. Is that what you're talking about?
Where, where is that?
It's in the, the, at last line of the first paragraph on the last page. In the second paragraph, I'm sorry. It says, we may have to work with MDE for a lead-safe status of the building.
Yeah, he, he said, he stayed, thank you for pointing that out. He was saying here that talking to their environmental experts, the lead-free certification would be an ambitious threshold, threshold to achieve with perhaps higher cost, which unpredictable standard to meet the many unknowns. Perhaps the town could consider a lead-safe standard that works for the intended use, reducing the pressure of zero over zero reading or share the cost of risk. We're not required, that's not really our requirement. That, from my understanding with Director Myers, is an MDE requirement that county has to uphold, I believe, as, as the overall inspector.
So my experience with lead and MDE is they come in and they swab touch points inside the house. If we're totally renovating, new drywall, new flooring, new ceiling, all that sort of stuff, the windows are going to be where you would have an issue and then any exterior paint. The, the wood, the framing of the building isn't getting tested. The brick is probably not getting tested. From my experience, it's been if you have any sort of peeling paint on the exterior, that has to be touched up and repainted, so it's sealed.
Absolutely.
Right, anyways. And then windows just grind lead because you can never paint enough to make sure it doesn't wear back through.
Those windows upstairs are not the original windows, except maybe in the very front.
The doors all knocked out?
Right, right.
Yeah.
But the windows all on the sides of that building, they're, they're not, I don't believe.
No, the windows are the newest.
Yeah.
Part of the old.
If there's, if there's like original wood windows, they should be replaced anyway, even from an efficiency standpoint.
I don't, maybe upstairs they are.
Maybe.
I think upstairs in the front, maybe?
Yeah.
But I'm not, I don't think the sides.
In the first, in the first floor, I don't believe or would.
So if we, if we wanted to maintain the look, we could always find someone who has stripped down old windows that fit. It's more legwork, but it's possible. Or just replace to match the rest. But as far as lead inside one of the apartments, unless we're leaving something exposed, like exposed beams or something like that, there shouldn't be any original materials that are going to get tested.
How do we get confirmation of that?
I can reach out to the guy that I use and you can talk to him and ask him what his process is. Because I would assume that we don't typically do lead testing as a town for like structural stuff. We don't have anything like that, so.
I don't, again, I don't know what level of, you probably have more information, but county, where the county comes in with the livability, if in terms of residential.
For me, it's state. You, you submit the lead certificate that you passed.
The state gives you that?
Yeah.
Okay, and then the county wants that.
I'm sure the county's got access to the system. I just go through the state portal and submit, yes, I've had it tested, yes, it passed, here's the certificate number and go from there.
Gotcha.
But yeah, I can certainly, not that we'll just use him, we'll bid it out for this, but he may be able to explain that process.
It'd be good to know, just so that when we go through this again, we just have a better understanding of what the scope would be.
Is it that zero over zero that Mr. Hader talks about, that same?
Yeah, you can't have, you can't have any lead present on a test within the living space or paint on the exterior. So it is easier, it is a true zero-zero. Maybe there's a path forward for like an exterior, like safe lead level where if the, the, like the woodwork at the very top has lead in it and tests for lead, that doesn't have to be encapsulated, but if you have like a painted house that has peeling paint, it has to be covered.
It certainly has lead in it somewhere.
Oh, absolutely.
So does in my house. I mean, that's, you know, I mean, that's kind of living in an old town with old buildings. I mean, they're.
The difference is that you're, these older homes that are existing, you know, they're, they're grandfathered in. Now, if you go and create a, an apartment, current conditions, current criteria, you have to meet that.
I agree with Connor though. I think they're going to end up pretty much ripping everything out. It's not.
If it's a whole, if it's a whole new build, there shouldn't be anything that, that will pop on a test.
Yeah, if the windows are 30-plus years old, they probably don't even function anyway. They probably need to be replaced.
So I guess there's, well, we, we only have two contractors that were, neither submitted a, a formal bid.
Right.
Okay, two contractors that were interested. The one, um, the Contour Construction, they were both kind of on the same page. He didn't go into as much detail. Uh, now, he did offer the, uh, their, their company's, um, owner, owner representative, construction management approach. I don't know if that's something we want to consider or, yeah, that's entirely up to you guys. I'm just pointing it out. And then.
Yeah, just, well, go ahead. I was.
I was going to say, I think getting some more information on, since the big sticking point is the lead issue, getting more information on what that process looks like as a, because maybe it is a little different for a commer-, like a town-owned commer-, kind of commercial space. Getting that type of info is probably the first step and it might alleviate both of these contractors' concerns or help with that process. And then there can be more dialogue there and then we, we figure something out.
More informed decision, right?
All right, so you'll forward that to us, to me or?
I'll get his info and get it over.
All right. Good. And then on the same topic, I don't know that we need to have a meeting right now with the fire department. I mean, other, this is public and I can reach out to Steve. I actually may have mentioned it to him, but I'm sure he's, he knows that we didn't get, we didn't get bids. But I'll, I'll reach out to confirm.
Just let them know the status.
And then, because I was suggesting that we had a post-bid meeting, but there's nothing really to meet about at this point, so. Unless we want to tell them what we're trying to do.
Does that 650 include exterior?
Uh, he actually gave a, right, I didn't put that in the folder. Let me see. That 647 he mentioned?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that was, that was going to be his.
Everything. Roof, exterior, foundation, and then all the interior. Cool.
I think that 33,000 environmental testing was in, included.
It's baked into that 647.
He's at like, what, 640s?
647, yeah.
So it's, it was his, it sounds like, I mean, what was the, what was the?
He knew what we, what grant, I think he did, they did know what grants we applied for.
I thought we had mentioned that at the contractor meeting.
We told them what we had, where we were, but.
He's fitting it in under what we've got, yeah.
I can, I can verify what the second application was if you give me a minute.
While Gary's doing that, it's taken me several minutes to get Google Maps to open up on my computer, but I'm looking at the front of that building. Those look like vinyl windows to me, so those are certainly not original windows.
Not original.
Yeah, even on the front.
I don't know how old they are. They're definitely not original.
Anything, what, lead was out in the seventies? Anything after the seventies?
Inside where the framing is.
Unless, unless the town's got some leftover lead stashed, something like lead paint stashed somewhere. That was the good stuff.
Hope not.
It's like light bulbs.
I mean, it might actually be nice to get something that looked better on the front of the building when we do this, but that's another conversation.
Application, I'm trying to find that application.
So I'm with you, there's going to be no lead in there.
Once they're, yeah, once they're done and the only, I mean, the only thing I'm not familiar with is like a, a commercial construction side of things, like if they're disturbing lead, do they have to test for that and is that all in this? And we don't know how much that, how much there is and all that sort of stuff. So like, there still might be some concern, but if it's purely from a lead-free certificate with MDE, there shouldn't be anything that's lead left in that new apartment.
Yeah.
My only concern would be keeping like the exterior paint up to quality because I'm sure that trim work at the top's got leaded in somewhere.
Yeah, I'm sure that does.
So they don't allow encapsulating it with paint, with a, uh, maybe like a, an epoxy type paint?
So all you have to do is paint it.
Oh, you're saying that you could do that?
Yes, so if, if it's chipping anywhere, like if you paint it and then three years later, it's a little worse for wear and it's chipping or peeling, you have to paint it if the house is older than a given year because it's assumed that it's a lead paint. But as soon as you paint it, you satisfy that requirement and then you can get your certificate after the interior testing.
Confirmed the second app.
Confirmed the second application, which we have not gotten approval on yet, was four fifty. So that between the two, that's seven and I think there was Neil had mentioned some other.
Grant, donations.
Donations from.
Yeah. I think it's twenty five K.
Ten and a.
Ten and fifteen. So hopefully we get that grant.
I can check, oh, Mike Mike's not in tomorrow, but he he's in this week, but he'll be back in Wednesday, so I can follow with him on this.
Yeah, they should be announcing that pretty soon.
Yeah, former mayor mentioned that there, he thought we might get early notice about it. Sometime soon, we'll see. Alright, thank you for that information. Um an update. Alright, item, that was item five. Item lot, number six, uh Ladel Warden from um. Uh Deeply Grooted, who was a participant in Music on the Main. Is offering to make cookies for the tree lighting ceremony.
Um a couple days before Music on the Main actually happened and offered to do cookies for the tree lady. Uh she's a home business, um I would make sure that we have a certificate of insurance for her in case anybody got sick. Um but she would like to donate those cookies. We would just need a known amount. Um I told her I would have to get a book from you guys first. So we would only then take care of pot chocolate.
She also said they would, something about being wrapped.
Yeah, they're they're just the individually wrapped cookies, yeah. I'm sure they'll probably have her sticker on there or we, she would want a sign that says provided by Deeply Grooted, which is, I would think would be acceptable.
Can't just go in and grab a ham.
It's hard to say, I mean, well, I I I had her, I think it was her banana bread or. I think it was banana bread. We bought it at the Music on the Main. I had it, I thought it was pretty good. I don't know.
I mean, we're not selling this, so it's probably different, but I don't think it would be a bad idea for her to provide a list of ingredients to.
Yeah.
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 Ingredients and then uh.
Yeah, whatever her business insurance is.
List of ingredients is a big good point.
I mean, how many cookies do you usually get?
The only time I ever buy it, I don't buy it for my house.
Buy for the staff party.
I mean, I would probably say it's. One, maybe two cookie trays, twenty five cookies on a tray. Maybe fifty, I don't know.
I think last, I think last year there were less than fifteen people at the tree.
They're gonna this year with that big tree. So you're you're talking five, six dozen of cookies, right? And the the town could also buy a tray of cookies.
Something different, yeah. I'll pick, we'll figure that out.
That's very nice of her to.
Yeah.
Did she mention any kind of quantity at all when she?
She just asked how much we would need.
Oh, she did.
Tell her and if that's doesn't work for her, we could always go ahead and get like, get the sugar cookies too, right?
They're sugar cookies. I saw them at BJ's the other day.
Already?
Already.
I meet him in March. Oh, yeah, mhm.
They had, I I I stepped away.
Yeah, those are addictive.
You have one more thing.
I have one thing related to that too, since we kept the Christmas tree lighting.
Yeah, I think you and I are on the same.
Okay, you go first.
So um we have a Toys for Tots box. It is in the building. I fit in it. Sometimes I just need a break here. Um so.
So she's hiding in the Toys for Tots. Where's Dana? I don't know.
So what I did today, I needed to break from the auditors. Um so. As an incentive, we definitely wanna have the box at the tree lighting. Say bring a toy, blah blah blah. But uh Ann Marie and I were kinda tossing this idea around. As an incentive to bring a toy, um. Would you guys be opposed to us raffling off a giant, if you bring a toy, you get your name in a raffle for a giant. Poncetta, Poinsetta, I don't know how to pronounce. Okay, I think they're at Costco for like twenty five, thirty bucks.
Awesome idea.
It it encourages people to, you know, donate toys.
Yeah.
But I went to run that idea before.
I love those, so.
You have to keep it inside, though, cause if you take it outside, it will kill it.
I wanted to plant it in my yard.
Yeah, we'll do, move to Hawaii, cause that's the only place. That was actually not what I had, but thank you for, cause I forgot about that, cause Kim told me, so thank you for saving me. Um no, actually, what happened, what I wanted to bring up was that the New Windsor Heritage Group has a little choir now and they have offered to sing. At the tree lighting.
Perfect.
So I assume nobody would object to that.
Well, Darnella mentioned it to um Ann Marie on Saturday.
Okay.
And.
More the merrier, you know, it's only.
They were, they were throwing around a couple different ideas, but that's.
It's only, you know, it's only a handful of people. I could connect everybody and, you know.
I, this is, this is, I think uh she's gonna touch base with. Yeah. Yeah. So.
I'd rather, if it's okay with you mayor, stick with this group adult since they offered.
Yeah.
And then we could always have the kids next year.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm happy, I.
We haven't had, we've had to pull strings a couple of times to get anybody. We've had trouble and they they volunteered, so. Have a couple of enthusiastic new members that are, have costumes and everything, so.
Costumes?
But I'm sorry.
It's it's New Windsor Heritage is the official group with the, what it was suggested by two folks, two young ladies that just moved into town recently and. They showed me they they have Victorian caroling costumes. They used to do it in Tennessee. And then they roped in our local famous person, whose name I won't say, to sing with them and.
Oh.
Probably a couple of, not me, cause nobody wants to hear me sing.
So do they, do these ladies live on uh South Church Street?
Right down here and, yes.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, they're fun, twins.
Heritage committee.
We don't use committee anymore.
Oh.
We're just New Windsor Heritage. Commit, somebody said committee sounded exclusive. We took that off.
If anybody would like to try to fit in the box, it's right there.
Sitting in the box.
But thank you. If you're trying to get out of the box, you know.
Since we're talking about Christmas, is it okay to ask, did did have we, no, we haven't picked up the tree yet? Did we secure? Did we secure the tree?
And the check, and the check is cashed. Uh yeah.
I thought that Wayne and and Alan recorded you in that.
Talked to Alan very recently and he asked me if we bought the tree. And and I say, yeah, did you pick it up? And I know he didn't, so I don't think he knows to pick it up yet.
A little reminder.
Any other questions? Can't believe we're talking about Christmas yet. Alright, moving forward, item number seven is water and sewer rates. Someone wanna take the charge or take the lead with that?
Probably everybody's favorite subject in New Windsor. Uh so I got some data from Kim from the last two years, but more importantly, like the last billing cycle. After the the new rates and there's some data points up here. Originally, you know, um. We advertised a percentage of people that would pay less, think because we implemented the rates at a period where water usage is typically at its highest. Um I know at least in my house, so the summer is the highest month, highest cycle. Um fifty nine percent about paid more for water under the new rates than they would have had we kept the existing flat rates that we had. The average bill thirty two dollars higher, the town collected more revenue or will collect more revenue this past cycle than. Any cycle in the past two years. One thing that I noticed was a trend, not just on this quarter, but prior quarters. Was that customers, they use over forty thousand gallons, which is typically about six um billing accounts. They account for about twenty percent of the usage of the entire town's water supply. But they were only, under those flat rates, they were only paying about ten to twelve percent towards the town's water sewer revenue. Under the new rates, they are paying more, it's up to fifteen percent. Um but I think if we added a third tier for forty thousand gallons or above or some variation of that. That we could um get them to paying closer to the twenty percent that they are consuming towards the overall water sewer revenue. Um below that, just some example of the last four quarters, overall system usage that we build out. Um and then how many accounts have bills over five hundred dollars? So we had a hundred and fifty four accounts that had a five hundred dollar bill or higher under the new rates. If we had maintained the old flat rates, that would, number would have been eighty three accounts. But typically it was below a hundred. Um the counts that are. Greater than four hundred also um jumped a little bit. Not quite as much, but they did jump up about fifty over what it would have been. Um and then you can see the average bills by account um below that, at the bottom of that first page. Four hundred ninety one dollars was the average bill for water and sewer uh this past quarter. Uh you know, I've had a little bit of free time, thanks to the government shutdown. Hopefully that ends soon, so I can go back to my normal day job. Instead of looking at spreadsheets of water bills. But the, but behind this is just an example, it's not like a, you know, set in stone thing, just um. What water rates and bills could be. If we added the third tier over fourteen, forty thousand gallons and if we also. Move forward with paying off the existing sewer loans that we have that are about eight hundred thousand dollars that cost. Town residents about seventy two thousand dollars a year.
It was a lot there. So was your view, cause you mentioned revenue. And I guess I'll start there. The intent to a- adjust the water rates was not. Our intent wasn't to increase revenue.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't believe that. I think that was just the, the, you know, the aftermath of of the rate structure that was chosen. Was that revenue was much higher than it was previously.
But but I think the intent, I I'm pretty sure the intent was to. Number one, have the folks that use the most water. Pay their, in the in the words of our, the consultant that we had come in. Pay their fair share for the use of the water, the higher use, the higher users. We're gonna be carrying, we're gonna be paying the more, you know, you use more, you you pay more. So it was never about revenue. Go ahead.
With that, for the over forty thousand users, did you calculate the E D U usage as well? Okay. I too looked at it.
It's it's not an easy problem.
I have slightly different numbers than you do, so I took. Looking at this quarter, I had four hundred and three accounts, fifty five percent of accounts used under nine thousand gallons. Nine thousand is the changeover point to where you will pay a little bit more at nine thousand and fifty gallon and. Nine thousand's where it it kinda crosses over. So I have four hundred and three accounts, fifty five percent under nine thousand gallons, which means they saw a reduced bill. The average residential usage, taking out schools and businesses. Springdale skews these numbers, um so taking them out with businesses as well, just residential. The average was ninety three, nine thousand three hundred eighty nine gallons a quarter is the average use.
For typical residential.
For residential account.
Right.
For every account, it's eleven thousand six hundred and forty seven gallons per quarter average. That includes businesses and schools and churches and and all of that. Q one, uh let me backtrack. Forty nine accounts were between nine and ten thousand gallons, so they were slightly elevated. Q one, we had, Q one twenty four, we had four hundred and thirty six accounts under ten thousand gallons. Um this quarter, we had four hundred and fifty two accounts under ten thousand gallons. Q two twenty four, we had four hundred and four accounts under ten thousand gallons. So it it, the numbers are higher for this quarter than even Q one of last year. I don't know if there's been more people coming into town or newer people in town. It 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 is a substantial amount, or it's a significant amount. I do know that looking at the numbers with Kim, there were several accounts that had a spike. That they hadn't had in prior quarters and we're talking fifteen to twenty thousand gallons additional water. This quarter compared to last year, all four quarters were. Let's say twelve thousand gallons and then this quarter, they were twenty seven thousand gallons. We can't attribute anything to that. Some were in newer houses, some were in older houses, so it's not like. Water leaks in older houses or or that type of thing to explain all of it. I'm not set on the tier system that I put together. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. So I don't, I'm not trying to skew, I'm just giving.
No, hold on for a sec. We we put a lot of effort into that. You put a lot of effort into that. We, the issue is, and I know that the, you know, we say it's not a easy thing to tackle. The reality of it is, and people don't like to hear it, but it's the truth. You mentioned paying off the eight hundred thousand dollars, okay, so we lower it. We, you said seventy, if we lowered that rate, it would be a short term thing. We've had that discussion multiple times. And it doesn't look. We don't look, um I don't think it's responsible to yo-yo the rate up and down. For the sake of saying we lowered the water bill for a quarter or two, cause we're about to. In- incur additional, I mean, the point is, we'd. For the the short term gain would be a overall long term loss, in my opinion, because it would look like we didn't know what we were doing. And folks already think that, and that's not what we're, not everybody thinks that, but I just, doesn't look. Like we have things.
Well, and we.
Undoubtedly, if if we're doing that.
And we have, and Gary and I talked a little bit about this this week and he was busy, so. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna continue to talk about it, but we have a lot of things in the pipeline that we have to pay for. Um and the only thing that I can, Gary had me look at the budget tabs and I I'm looking at that again now to try to refresh my memory, but. The one thing that sticks out in my mind is the is the water line. We got four million dollars from Governor Hogan, what, three years ago now? To do the line from basically the railroad track in, but the line from there all the way out to the well needs to be replaced. And and remember, our number that we got several years ago was eight million for that, and that was several years ago, so I have no doubt that's gonna cost more. And that's just one project. We've got this whole E N R thing that we don't know.
Yeah, best case scenario.
You know.
Town responsible for four point three, roughly thirty percent.
And that's just two projects and there's more, so I mean.
We're gonna update those, those.
Yeah.
List of water and sewer projects. Updated and complete, I'm sorry, some have been completed, water line, uh Blue Ridge Pump Station. And then, but like you said, there's other ones that are filling in behind it, so.
And we still have to do. Hillside.
Yeah, that's one of the ones that's on that, on the list.
And um is it um? And is it, um, Maple, I think of the name of the street.
Lambert. Yeah, but also the connection leg between Maple and Hillside, or Maple and Lambert too.
Waterline installation replacement and upgrade with laterals on Lambert and Hillside before paving. That's gonna be roughly a two million dollar project there.
And, and didn't, I don't remember the exact number, Gary.
And paving, plus or minus.
Didn't, when we, because we, we look, we looked at paying off the loans. And we had it on our sheet, you know, and what it bought, and wasn't it like forty dollars?
Well, I'm trying to get to, what was the?
It was like forty dollars a quarter. Not that I'm scoffing at forty dollars. Revenue for these kind of projects that we have coming up, we would have to pump it up.
Punch in the calculator. When I ran through these, I don't know, I forget when this was, last January. My first proposal was twenty percent reduction, which is about seventy thousand dollar reduction, so you're seventy-two. You can certainly sit down and tweak it and see what we can try.
Shuffle the budget around a little bit, because typically, the last, looking at the last couple of years' budget, we've been.
We've always had a surplus.
We, um, we may not even, you know, have to do that, just to, to meet these, to, to meet the revenue generated from rates at this, at these levels.
So some, some of the surplus, if I remember correctly, and please correct me, whoever was here during all that. I believe some of that surplus was assisted by COVID relief.
Yeah, yeah, it looks like it was.
So, so when we, when, when we looked at this, that, this year, last year, whenever it was. Taking the COVID relief out made it more or less a net zero. Did not want to cut seventy. So, like I said, you and I can sit down and see if we can come up with something. The fourth tier, I like, I know Kim's not, because it's a little more confusing as, as we go, and there's been some phone calls.
And I'm, I would ask you to, to speak into my, because I mean, this is a public meeting and folks. Yeah, it's.
Sorry, I figured it fixed up.
I mean, you know, there's, I looked at the numbers, you know, some, some jurisdictions nearby. I actually talked to the mayor in Tony Town, they just lowered their water rates a flat five percent. They have, it's a much larger town.
Yeah, it's not apples on apples.
But, and they've already completed their E and R upgrade. But they, they, they did that by postponing some other public works projects. But, um. Five percent cut to them, their water rates are already significantly lower than ours. And I understand why ours are what they are, because the cost of operating our water system is only divided by seven hundred and thirty-eight accounts. And theirs is divided by several thousand accounts. Um, so it's just, the math doesn't work.
Talk to people like, like many of us have done. Talk to people in Smithsburg that have similar situations. I mean, it's, it's, that's the issue. You know, is the size of the, of the town.
I don't have a problem with numbers.
We have a way to, you know, especially, we have some customers that are very low water users in our town. And, you know, far below the national average. In fact, the, the average water user in New Windsor residential customer is a fr- a third of, of the national average water use per home.
What does that have to do with New Windsor?
Well, they're already using as little water as possible.
No, that's not true.
The water rates.
Josh, what does that have to do with the town of New Windsor?
I'm just saying that the customers that use a very little wa- bit of water, their bills could be pushed even lower. They're the ones that are probably, you know, doing the most to conserve water usage already, and have been for years.
Yeah, that's quarter.
What's that number, Josh? Remind me.
What I'm saying then is.
Gallons, like what is their, like just refresh, I know it's.
Uh, six to eight thousand, or even some less. But like, their, their water bill could be three hundred dollars or less, as opposed to, you know, three fifty or higher.
So about three, fifty dollars a quarter savings?
Over fifty dollars a quarter savings for the lowest, lower, lowest tier customers.
If we did what?
If, if we, you know, had, added a third tier for our largest customers. To more fairly distribute the, the, you know, the cost. We have to generate a set amount of revenue to meet the operating expense of the town. And our top six co- accounts are not contributing to the percentage of water that they're consuming on a, on a quarterly basis.
Is that also paying with paying the loans? To see that savings, is that with paying the loans off, and then having like the three tier?
Or finding some way to shuffle them.
Right, but ideally, it's pay the loans off, take that monthly payment out and drop it seventy-two thousand. Which again, with the spreadsheet, I think it's twenty percent, uh, revenue reduction. If we, I think seventy grand was like twenty percent revenue reduction.
And then eventually. Take it back up when we get, when we have to get loans for.
I mean, it, it does, it does.
Personally, I think that the bill should have a line, if we're paying loan, if every, you know, the loans are for sewer. So every, you know, sewer customer in the town should have a line on their bill that says sewer loans. Their, their contribution of that sewer loan is thirty-two dollars, because they're users of it. I'm a user, and you all are. They should, you know, to be transparent, that way we have an end goal. Rather, it's just, it's, you know, hiding it in a base rate on a, on the website with data that's years old by the time, you know, as time passes by. You can't go to our website today to find out how much loan payment is in our base rate today. That information is not available to the residents of our town. And that's just my opinion, is that we need to be more transparent about it.
About the balance?
Well, not just the balance, but the, the, you know, how much we're paying for it every, um, how much each customer is paying for it.
I think it might, I don't disagree with the, with the concept, Josh, I think that might be an administrative nightmare for our staff. But I think we could probably post something that we updated regularly online that, that said that. You know, we have this much in loans, we have this many users, do the math, you know?
But, but also gives us a target to, like, when the lo- when the base rate could be lowered.
But in the, and, and I don't, and that would be great, but I think be- before that happens, or pretty close to when that happens. We're gonna be taking out another loan to do something else.
Yeah, that, that's.
That's, that's kind of, that's been my experience with this, I mean, we did pay off some loans. Like what, five, six years ago, something like that. Sorry, Dana.
So I, I asked a few, several people around the town. And, and folks may say, well, you didn't ask me, but, okay, you know, but I couldn't ask everybody, but I did ask. I asked people about that, and several people have said, well, I thought we were paying the loans off. And I said, see, when you, I, I, I agree that we should do everything we can to be fully transparent, I'm not against that, we should. But I don't, also don't wanna give people the idea that, once this is paid off, because a lot of people think that, then we're good. And I'm like, man, we, we got, it's disheartening, but it's just where we live, you know? We got eighteen, eighteen million in projects that we potentially, that we need to do. Over, not today, not tomorrow, but like, a portion of them is, are tomorrow. And so I don't want people to think, well, once we clear this hurdle, the rate's gonna be cut in half, because that's not what it is.
Dana, were you figuring out the loan? Between the two?
Thirty-one years.
Okay, and it was seven hundred and thirty water accounts, so.
What did you say, Gary?
Not a count, e- it's eight hundred and twenty-eight water EDUs and eight hundred and eleven sewer EDUs. And that's, that's what you calculate, I think that's what's in this, for this spreadsheet that the Towson State folks developed. Which I was trying to play around with, but there's, I can't do it. The one, the wastewater treatment plant was in there. So when I, when I take the loan, loan amount on that off of Dana's, uh, information, put in the, the, the interest rate. And, and it's, is that one paid off in two thousand?
Even, and even if the decision is to not pay off the loans, my personal opinion is that. Maybe not the best decision, but, um, but we could still, we could still save the average residential user. On the rate. Just more fairly distributing the rate tiers.
And that's what, that's what Connor's structure did in the first place, because we didn't have that at all.
It actually stepped us in the right direction, because our biggest users are paying more towards the revenue, their revenue share.
Which is what the goal was.
Which is what the goal was.
I think it needs to be stepped even further, um, because we have a, we still have hundreds of water accounts that are in the ten to twenty thousand range. Whose bills went up dramatically this past quarter.
So I've got, I've got thirty accounts that used over twenty-five thousand gallons. And if I remember correctly, I think there were like, I think you're right, it was like six, maybe seven, that were north of forty. With three of them being Springdale. I think one of them was one of the six unit apartments, like, those kind of makes sense.
One of the water accounts is, is, um, my community's HOA, we have a little sprinkler system. It's like, you know, the water's about to get turned off, so our usage kind of just, you know, does this also. Even though our, our high month is still really low overall in the town. And that kind of skews the averages down a little bit. But, but I think if you kind of take out those anomalies, look at strictly the, you know, the majority of the residential customers. I think we owe it to them to do what we can to, um, to have their share of the revenue that is required to run the water system. Be more fairly distributed.
Not here, I think you're right, right on, I think we were trying to do that.
Hundred percent.
And we, and, you know, to that, to that point. You know, hopefully, folks, here's the thing, if I get a bunch of email, or we get comments somewhere. The folks are watching, and, um, you know, that, that would be a good thing, because typically, people don't. And they say, well, we didn't know, and I'm like, well, I mean, we, maybe we could have put it out on, I guess, I, I thought we put it out on our. I know I mentioned it during the, during the forum, I thought I did, that we were adjusting.
I mean, I, I went, I went back and looked when we, when we talked about this, and we started talking about it in March. If I'm correct, one, two, three, four, five, six meetings, it was talked about, so it's not. And, and I give Councilman Frock a lot of credit, because he put a lot of time into it, it sounds like you've, you've, and you've done the same thing, but the whole idea.
Little screen.
The whole idea was that we have some organizations, some individual users who are taxing our system more. Because they use a lot more water, and then, like, the people, like you said, that are using seven hundred, seven thousand gallons are, are not. And so Councilman Frock came up with this system, now, we've only had one quarter to implement this. So if it needs to be tweaked, I'm completely open to that. I don't, and I don't know if we should give it a little bit more time, or, yeah, I mean, that kind of seems to me like, maybe give it two quarters. And you two put your heads together, because you're, you're looking at the, if that, you're up to that. But, but, um, the whole point was to relieve the burden on the lesser users. That was the point, and to make the higher users more responsible for the wear and tear on the system. And we, we, we can't be irresponsible about the fact that we have millions of dollars of projects coming down the pike. And it, it looks on the budget that we have all this money, well, that money has to be invested, that's the bottom line, you know?
So, and just to, just to piggyback a little on Kim, I'm all, all, all for what, what you guys are, are striving to do, that's great. But I think when we came on to the console, we were faced with, um, picking up where we have kicked the can down the road. For our water and sewer infrastructure for many years. And we had to make really hard decisions to get where we are today, to have some, some coin in the bank. That looks like a lot of money, every time Dana tells us the budget, I'm like, or tells us what we have in our investments, I'm like, oh my, people are gonna think we should be. And, but we have so many millions of dollars worth of projects, and I'm trying to do everything I can, I know Kim, and, and I'm sure you all do. We're not gonna kick the can down the road, we gotta make hard decisions and keep moving forward with it. So we can find some ways to fairly, uh, and equitably, uh, have our water bill for the citizens super. And we need to do that, and still keep the revenue coming in, that we have funds in the bank to, to put towards these, these projects. That are right on our heels.
The, the one thing I want to add about, about loans, they, the loan, any loan we take for water or sewer is applied to the base rate. Is factored into the base rate, that is not the only thing in the base rate. The, the own, the own, operation and maintenance cost of the sewer system, water and sewer system, is all factored into the rates. The base rates and user rates and all that. And believe, and trust me, I am no mathematician, and the, and the deep down determination of those things is, is way beyond my mathematical capabilities. Now, I'm gonna throw this out there. Three of you all were here, I think it's been two or three years ago now, when we used Circap. Which is Southeast Rural Community, I can't remember the acronym. A lady that had forty years of experience working with water and sewer rates, do a study. And that is an option. And I'm not downplaying any of your gentlemen's mathematical capabilities, they're way beyond mine, I can tell you that. But the, the, looking, having a professional look at these numbers, who have done it for different. Uh, water and sewer systems, enterprise funds, enterprise systems of different sizes and everything, might be something to consider. Now, we all know how that worked out, and it wasn't well. And, and the lady that did that, flat out told me after, she will not work for this town anymore. So we gotta be careful, if we're going down that road, we have to take it seriously, and let a professional tell us. Now, even before that, I think it was in twenty-two, I want to say, she did that.
Didn't she do it for free too?
Yeah, it didn't cost us anything, other than a lot of time on staff's part, pulling data together. But, um, back in eighteen, right around the time I started, there was another, um. Andrew Jones did it for Frank, actually, it was right before I started, um, had it done, uh, at, at that time. And Frank basically took that information and implemented the current rate, the current five, six-year. Um, water sewer rates from when I basically started for that, and that's all, obviously, now, since we're past that, that structure. And moved into this, to the next structure. But, um, just, just throwing it out there, there's a lot of factors in the rates, both base and usage. That you couldn't explain everything in those rates to public. It, it's, 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 it's just impossible, it's a lot of information.
Gary said it didn't end well, um, because we were, we were very excited to do that. Because that's when Sneider Summit was coming online, and we were gonna have all these new EDUs, and they were gonna be generating income for us. And she, when she gave us the report, and she said, you guys need to raise your water rates. We about all fell out of the chair.
I had that information, you guys, I'm, I'll share it with you.
I looked, putting, putting the current system together, I looked at, took that all into account.
You know, that you can take these things down, and it, and, and she told us, and, and we were like, no.
And we all know, we all know that any cost, operation and maintenance cost included, eh, they're, they, they don't go down. They continue to increase, and the way I, I explain it in layman's terms. Eh, to, to, an enterprise system is the same, whether you have five hundred customers or five hundred thousand customers. It's the same, it operates the same way. You take all the cost that it takes to pull clean water out of the ground, or out of, out of a, a stream, or wherever you get your water. Treat it, put it into a system, distribute it to the, to the customers. It, it goes into those buildings, it goes down a drain, it becomes sewer, it goes to a sewer pump station. And then it's ultimately pumped to the wastewater treatment plant, put back in. All those costs, loans, O and M, salaries, everything that takes to bring that commodity. Which is clean water, which becomes dirty water, which becomes clean water again, and put it to the, to the customers. Divided by the number of customers is, it's, it's a, it's not this scale where we're trying to make, generate all this revenue. We're trying to break even in, in, on, on a scale of what these costs to do this are gonna take. It's, it's not a, it's not a for-profit business, it's not the goal. The goal was to break even, eh, eh, to ha- eh, based on what your costs are gonna be to operate the systems and provide the water.
My, my one regret with this, the current system is not making, like, making the difference between water and sewer rates. More, so bring the water usage rate down and make the sewer rate higher to account for, it's so much more expensive. more, so bring the water usage rate down and make the sewer rate higher to account for it's so much more expensive for the sewer side of things.
Sixty-four, I think, on expenses?
If not more, so, I mean, a third to forty percent of the water and sewer budget is paying NDE contractors and sludge removal, and this is more for residents than, than us, 'cause we know this. So, I mean, you're almost at forty percent of the revenue just for paying somebody to monitor the stations and remove the sludge. That's not our staff, that's not any maintenance, that's not anything else, no chemicals, nothing, it's not bringing water into the town, and you're at forty percent already. It's not cheap, especially on the sewer side, so.
Sewer rates are typically higher in any municipality. Sewer just costs more to, to, to do. I mean, it's, it's more to treat, it's, it's typically, you know, you have, you typically have multiple sources of water. Whereas, I don't know, I'm ninety-nine percent sure that any municipality in this county has one wastewater treatment plant. So all the water, they might have five or ten or fifteen different wells, or whatever they have, and different treatment at, at individual on smaller scales, but it all becomes, it all comes down to one wastewater treatment plant. You know, so.
And we're looking at, you know, we're always looking. I just wish, I, I, I hope residents are listening tonight, because what folks need to understand is nobody here is looking to increase revenue for like, like Town Manager Di said, this is a break even, you know, endeavor to try to, we all pay the same, you know, we all have the bill. I mean, I would love for our bill to be cut, you know, but this is what we have to, we have to endure to, you know, we have to work on trying to find ways. I think your suggestion of another tier, when I, I read it this afternoon, I thought, man, I mean, this is, this thing is probably gonna evolve e- even more than that. I'm just thankful we have smart individuals on, on the staff, not that we didn't before, 'cause we, we did, but you know, we, we have people that can, that can take this and kinda digest it and, and look for better ways, so, yeah.
It's a work in progress constantly.
Yeah, the county, the county, I think I said, the county has a three-tiered system.
My Harry's water system is like at seven tiers.
Really?
They have like, like very low usage tiers.
I initially had, I think it was like every five thousand gallons was a tier, but it was getting too complicated, especially from an administrative side and a question side and-
We have a lot of customers that use in like a, you know, five or six to twelve thousand gallons, that's like the bulk of our customers probably. There's some outliers on both ends, big outliers on, on the higher end.
So you've got up to twelve, I'll do the math, up to twelve is seventy-three percent. So seventy-three percent of residents use under twelve thousand gallons.
And um, I think if we um, like that, you know, that other twenty-five percent is um, you, of sizable portion of our water system, and if they're not, if the rates aren't, you know, and that's the problem with uh, having base rates and usage rates. A lot of jurisdictions have just usage, I don't think that would work for us, because our usage rates um, you know, go up and down a lot, and it would, it would hurt the revenue, um, you know, ma- maintaining the um, the revenue to support the expenses. Um, so the base rates kinda help offset tho- those, those low quarters. Um, and that's, you know, a lot to do with the, the schools being out in the summertime, I think. But um, you know, it's a balancing act of, of, you know, 'cause if you have the base rates too high, then your lowest customers are paying a significant amount with no usage of water. Um, but then you set them too low, and then the customers that are using a lot of water are um, not paying their share.
And their share, yeah.
It's, it's a, it's, it's a big balancing act, especially when you have such disparity on such a small water system.
Right.
Yeah.
And we do.
Looking, looking into a third tier is, I think maybe a good, a good thing to look at. And to where, I think maybe right now we're under, up to twenties one, and then over twenties the other. I think looking at something that would, I think you said, how many do we have under twelve thousand?
Seventy-five percent's under twelve.
So if we have, you know, up to twelve thousand as the low tier, and then, I don't know what the next, you know, twelve thousand one to twenty or twenty-five or something like that, and then above twenty-five, it would be the higher. How, how many, how many do you have over twenty-five, you know?
Uh, it's thirty.
So there's, there's where you're, you hit that higher end, the higher user harder, give more relief to the, to the low, in, the lower users, which is a higher amount, and then that in-between is, is kinda, you know, the third, I don't, I'm not, I'm just random general numbers.
Fif- fifteen thousand and up is fourteen percent. So it's an eighth.
Yeah, even if you did twelve to twen- eh, twelve to twenty, twelve thousand one to twenty as your middle tier, and then above twenty.
Yeah.
To pick up, yeah.
All right, any other questions? All right, well, thank you all for your hard work. Thank you, Josh, for looking into it. We'll keep, we'll keep working on it. I don't have another agenda item, but I do have uh, uh, I, I guess we can call it mayor's uh, comments for, um, so there's some things that I've been working on over the last couple of weeks, and um, you know, from time to time, I do a self-evaluation of my performance um, as mayor, and, and as prior, you know, as a council member. And uh, since taking office, I've expanded those evaluations to the, the town staff and, and the council from a different perspective. Um, and I've concluded, um, as a body, I think we're performing um, very well, and in a lot of cases, I think we are exceeding the mark in our performance. Um, I'm really proud that um, people ask me often, you know, are you enjoying this? And the truth is, I really am. I, you know, um, this has been a great thing, but not what, it's, it's made easier by the staff and council members that we have, so I wanna thank you all for that. But that said, uh, I believe that there is some room for improvement in communication, and uh, please, if you're, you know, listening, do not take this as an indictment of any one particular person, this includes me, 'cause I've, I've um, I've breached the comments that I'm about to make as a, as a mayor, and uh, that's, that's significantly, but um, there have been times that I think I, I could uh, take my own advice. Uh, so um, I just wanted to say, as, you know, as public service to the community, we hold um, a shared responsibility to represent our town professionally, um, with professionalism, integrity, and unity. And while it is understood that we will all, we will not always agree, it is, my expectation as mayor uh, that we resp- uh, respect one another, whether uh, in formal settings, through social media, or casual conversations. Uh, we must be mindful that our words carry weight and can impact uh, public perception, community trust, intergovernmental, and business relationships. Uh, to ensure that we uh, continue the present unified and respectful image, I would uh, like to remind everyone to follow these principles roughly. Clarity and representation. When speaking in public forums or social media uh, with residents or even in the media, please understand that your comments may be construed as official positions of the town or the council, and to that end, unless officially designated, no individual should speak on behalf of the entire council or administration without prior co- coordination. Let me clarify that. I don't mean that we've had that circumstances, right, you know, today. Uh, but again, there, uh, there's some things that, you know, that are, will probably be more public in, in the future, and I just wanna make sure that we protect ourselves in the, and any comments that we may make uh, potentially to the media. Uh, lastly, if you have any questions about uh, you know, about an item, it's good, I found personally, to reach out to a colleague, to reach out to Gary, to reach out, and we've all done that, so like I said, we're, we're beyond the mark in that particular thing. And then when reaching out to colleagues, as we mentioned a few weeks back, Councilwoman Schultz mentioned, uh, we should do it individually to avoid any potential breach of public meeting, the Public Meetings Act. Item number two is respectful communication, which I think we typically have, have had. Uh, we've been elected, appointed, and hired to serve the town of New Windsor and the community, and all public communication should portray respect for differing opinions and uphold the dignity of our offices. Uh, constructive dialogue, even when there's disagreement, strengthens our leadership and does not uh, does not undermine the work of our organization. Um, media inquiries. For consistency and accuracy, please direct all official media inquiries to the Town Public Information Officer, Communication Officer, Councilwoman Schultz. This helps to ensure that messaging aligns with adopted policy and avoids miscommunication. Social media conduct. While we encourage um, open dialogue with residents, please remember that online posts can be quickly amplified and may be interpreted as an official position. Exercise caution, maintain professionalism, and refrain from engaging in contentious debates in public forums, and again, be factually accurate. For an in- internal uni- unity, while we will not always agree on every issue, it is important that we show mutual respect and communicate, and commitment to working collaboratively. Um, our collective effort should always be fo- be focused on serving the best interests of our community. And once again, I thank all of you for, like I said, going beyond the mark. I think we're a great team. My job has been busy, a lot busier than I anticipated, but I'm so thankful for the, the people that work in the staff, and I sincerely mean that. So, um, again, this is not to beat up on anybody. I'm looking down the road and the potential for um, things that we may um, occur, and I hate to be kinda secretive about it, but it's just, we'll, we'll, we'll hear more. All right. That's all I have.
Can you send that to me?
I've got a copy for you. All right, that's uh, that's all I have in terms of my soapbox. Um, any other comments?
Just real quick, um, just a quick update on the five K this past Saturday. Uh, we were right at ninety participants and had good weather once again. Many thanks to all the volunteers, sponsors, and participants who made the fifth year another successful event. The Westminster Road Runners Club will be sending the re- results to me, and we'll be posting them on the town website. And Anne Marie and a friend of hers, Dale Worley, were taking pictures, and they're gonna provide, she's gonna get a flash drive. Uh, I think she's gonna bring it in tomorrow, so the pictures will be also made available and, and to the participants and anybody there. This guy was taking a lot of pictures, so, thanks again for all the help with that and another successful event.
Thank you, all of you on the staff, for all, everybody who helped out.
Um, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Should we remind everybody, Mayor, of our meeting dates being different?
Thanks, Kim.
Yes.
Uh, we're switching around for November, right?
Yes.
Monday, November third is the council meeting, correct?
Yes.
And then Wednesday, November nineteenth is the work session. Thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.